Let's call this meeting to order. This is the, oh my goodness. The August seventeenth.
Yeah, five C. I know in the ADR minutes, there was a question about whether staff was going to look into, was there a cabinet sign? And did they require variance to have the extra blades on? I didn't know if staff had followed up. We could get an update.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-two meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodfin.
Here.
Counselor Pierce.
Here.
Member Hicks.
Here.
Member Smith Meyer.
Here.
Member Fox.
Here.
Member Savage.
Here.
Member Santa Cruz.
Okay.
Here.
They were, they were good.
Okay, I have a quorum. Open the meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. If someone would like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted or any changes?
So they don't, okay.
So that's okay, that's okay. Sorry.
I may, are you referencing item four of the ADR minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I had that question. Thank you. Second.
Motion has been made in second. And all those in favor? So do we want to pull it from consent or anybody else?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Those minutes are in the books. We've got an agenda overview. Item seven C
If that's the clarification, then I'm fine.
That's the clarification. We're good.
Yep, I'm good.
Did you get my email?
No.
Okay. It was the one in on South State Street?
That's this one. The comics repeats?
has been postponed to no date certain. So if anybody's here for item seven C, that will not be heard tonight. Item seven D has been postponed to our September twenty-first meeting. It's hard to believe it's almost September, but September twenty-first meeting. So if anyone's here for item seven D, we will not be hearing that as well.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I just had a.
Let's pull, let's go pull that out from consent. What's your other one?
Five E, which is the three-ten Loudon Road.
Casey Signs on behalf of LL Flooring?
There was some additional clarification on that.
So we'll pull that from consent. So we're going to hear items, what was it, five C, five E? So that is our overview for tonight. Everything else is on the agenda and will be heard.
E, correct.
So we will hear those individual items. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve by consent, item five A, five B, five D, and five F.
So moved.
As submitted with ADR recommendations. That motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Sorry. Opposed? That motion carries. Let's open up item five C. If we could just read that into the record.
Chairman One Graphics LLC, on behalf of repeats, request ADR approval for the replacement of an internally illuminated wall sign at one oh six South State Street in the urban transitional district.
Okay, so the question regarding that was, this is comics toys, fifteen inch by ninety-three inch long sign. And the question, Suzanne, you had another question?
Well, I just, I guess I was just questioning whether or not design review had a comment about it. I mean, I wasn't sure why it got on the consent because I thought that the sign should have been maybe on the storefront and not up on the clapboards and maybe a little smaller. But I'm not, I, I, I didn't see what design review said. So I wasn't sure why it was.
Yeah, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, item four talked about this in the ADR minutes, and that was the blade sign had been installed, and there was some, I was confused after reading these minutes on what they were trying to do. So if someone could just give me some clarification. They were talking about he, the blade sign had already been installed? And the application did not include the blade sign?
That's correct.
So.
And then existing cabinet was noted. I, I didn't know what that meant.
That's the cabinet around the existing sign. So the.
Oh, okay.
Sign would have already been.
So they were just filling in the cabinet again?
New face. Yeah.
Okay.
So the blade sign, is that shown on the picture here? Is that the little dot in the line that I see?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was already installed with this design?
It had been previously installed, is my understanding.
So what is that black thing? What is that?
That dot in that line is the blade sign sticking out straight this way.
Ah, so they're actually not replacing it?
No.
Oh, hmm. So they're not replacing it. They're replacing the sign, but they're, I just think it looks tacked on and it's above.
So what you're saying is that one that's up on the clapboards, the frame was there. All they're doing is filling it, same size, everything. So.
Yeah.
They're good to go.
So it's not grandfathered, but it's basically just, just putting a new face on it.
Okay.
Okay, so who was using the blades, the stick-out sign?
That I don't know. I don't know anything about the blades.
So is that not still there?
It is still there.
Yeah.
And it says comic toys?
I, I assume so. I haven't seen the face of that. Do you recall from the meeting?
It was not a part of this application?
Right, that's the important part.
I think that was already there. So what, what this application is for is just that cabinet sign?
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any member of the audience have any questions concerning this application? All right, without that, we take a recommendation to approve as submitted with ADR recommendations, if there are any. So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's see, read item five E, was it?
Yes.
She's a kid, I'm reading, right. Five E into the record if we could.
Casey Signs, on behalf of LL Flooring, request ADR approval for the installation of an internally illuminated wall sign at an internally illuminated freestanding sign panel at three-ten Loudon Road in the Gateway Performance District.
So Jeff, your question regarding the facade of the building, I think, is a good one because the existing condition with Toys R Us and whatever was there before, I don't know what the front condition of the sign, of the building is now. Is it the same as what it looked like with Toys R Us?
No, because this only shows one entry door underneath the Harbor Freight, and I believe there's a front door, and then there's a side door to the vestibule, and then to the right of that vestibule sign, it's all blank wall. And then it goes into that grass area, you know, where the Popeyes was approved. So I'm a little confused here because this looks like a lot of change, more glass, potential awnings, all these things that I don't know that we've seen or need to see. And then suddenly, there's more than just the one sign here. So I'm a little, just trying to get a clarification of.
Yep, that's a good question.
Whether the whole facade has to go through ADR as well or the board.
So I guess the, I guess the question is, the Popeyes Chicken, is that a separate pad?
I think that's still a separate pad. I think this is still the original building length of a hundred and sixty-four feet or eighty-four.
Right, so the Harbor Freight's on the left, this LL Flooring will be in the middle, and then the Jersey Mike's is the one that's a little set back, I think, is the way it works. And then Popeyes is a separate pad altogether.
That's what I believe, looking at this, but there's no area.
I guess the question for staff is, do we know what the front of this facade looks like now? Or did we change it when Harbor Freight came in to do their approval back a year or so ago?
So if you want to open the public hearing, I believe the applicant is in the audience.
Oh, good. I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant up if you're here. You don't, you don't have to come if you don't want to, but we'll invite you up if you can clarify, if you can clarify a little bit for us.
Yeah, the, the problem is, is that I'm working with what the company I'm working for gave me.
Okay.
So I'm not, what I got from information is that's what I got from information.
Okay, if you could just state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Robin Casey from Casey Signs.
From Casey Signs, okay. So Casey Signs, so on the front of this building, so I guess the question is, what, the proposed condition that you're looking at here is marketably different than the existing condition from several years ago when Toys R Us was there?
Uh-huh.
Do you know if the proposed, the, the way this looks and the proposed conditions with the awnings and with the different ceiling heights and or different roof lines, is that the way the building looks now?
I believe that, from what I understand, that this building is still under construction. It's not, that's what I was told.
Okay.
So just.
I mean, how much work have they?
So for clarification, these are sign applications? They're strictly sign applications? So any changes that are made to the building are not approved?
Nothing to do.
Through these, through these approvals?
Right, I understand, but how can we prove a sign that's going to go on a facade that we haven't yet approved?
It's like, it's out of order almost.
It's like we need, should be seeing the facade first to make sure we agree, because what if we come back and want something in the facade changed, and now that means the sign has to move? I guess that's their chance they take, but it doesn't, this isn't an accurate depiction of where the sign is going to go based on the existing building.
So it's, I, I actually don't know the answer to the question whether, I mean, I know Harbor Freight looks the way it's shown in here. It looks the way it's shown on this graphic. I don't know about the rest of the facade.
I think, do you have any recollection of?
I was just there. I don't remember.
The, this building was not part of it. It was just the Popeyes.
I don't recall it at all.
Yeah, I'm thinking when they came through for the.
But Lisa has minutes from ADR. ADR here. Sam was supposed to follow up and. If there was any facade changes that had been submitted.
Oh, okay. We don't have an update on that.
And I do not know.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is this building built yet?
Yes.
So, all right, so we have the, the condo arrangement, Harbor Freight, and the other tenants.
Right.
Do we have a depiction here of what the facade looks like?
No.
Well, the existing conditions one is what it looks like.
Well, that's way before. That's, that's when Toys R Us was.
Oh, it does, yes.
But the layout, I think of the windows and everything.
I don't know that it is. I think it's.
The building, the windows and the door entrances and everything haven't changed. So they're showing a lot, like, more infill to the right, whereas today, that building is just brick to the right.
So, yeah, it's, it, so the facade has changed.
No.
Hasn't it? Oh, I, I think it has. I thought, I thought it had.
Looking at it right now.
Really made an effort to delineate between the left side and the right side, knowing that they weren't going to go into the other side.
I wish I had now.
So irregardless of that, yes.
Well, I think we could approve the freestanding sign.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I was going to say.
Because I'm wondering if that's where the confusion, because it says here there's a replacement panel.
I guess, let's take, let's take the facade out of the equation for the moment. If this, if anyone has a question or concern about the LL Flooring, which is a fairly benign sign, three feet, two and seven, eight inches tall.
That's on the pillar.
On the front, on the front of the building. So that one that's on the front of the building, the Jersey Mike Subs is their corporate logo for the front of the building. I, I don't know that we have a problem with the look and feel and the design of them. Again, again, to Jeff's point, are they going to be centered under the, you know, the portico type thing that are there? Are there awnings? Those aren't for tonight. I guess those are questions that aren't really going to be tonight.
I'm wondering if it's the pillar sign, because that looks fine before.
You know, there's two parts to the application. One is the wall sign, one is the pylon sign.
Also, it is separate.
Google.com the address?
Three-ten, three-ten Loudon Road.
Yeah, so it is, it does, the, the, let me just see that for a second. Yeah, so it is, the facade that's on here is not right. So the facade that's shown is.
ADR had noted that.
Is what's proposed.
And ADR noticed that item six of their minutes.
Yeah. Our proposed changes, those will come separately. So you're right, to Amanda's point, you're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. You're approving the signs before you're approving the, the front design changes.
Right.
Right.
What's our, what's our?
I mean, I guess the thing, question is, if we approve the pylon sign tonight, are they going to go out and install that?
Right.
And then they're going to be, it's going to be up there for a while? Will they wait?
Yeah.
For the next piece? Or is it something they prefer to do all at one time?
I think the only thing that they asked me was if they could put a banner up.
Well, yeah, it'd be temporary.
Because like I said, from what I understand, it's a, it's a work in progress. It's not, you know, we, I don't think we could go and put a wall sign up right now.
Can we delay this for a month?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. I, I guess I would make that motion that we delay any discussion or any decision on this until we have more.
Okay, so from a, from a applicant's perspective, so we, we need to know if there are facade changes coming, what the facade's going to be. Is it going to be this facade, and then ADR needs to weigh in on all of those?
What about reference to the multi, the tenant panel? Would that be opposed too?
So the, the standalone panels out on the front of the street, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
I don't think there's any opposition to those, is there?
No.
So we could approve those.
That would make them happy.
And you could do temporary signs for the building, and those are, those aren't us. We don't do temporary signs.
Well, yeah, I was thinking, that, that's why I mentioned the multi-tenant. I think they'd be very happy with just that for now.
So if we, if we look at this application and basically say that we will take a motion and approve the, the street level signs for this application and table the, the difference?
That's totally understandable.
Till we have a.
Till we have some, till we have some clarification on what the building looks like. Is your motion there still appropriate?
So moved.
Okay, so that's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So you're good to go? You're, you're good on what we're going to do?
Okay, yeah.
So you're good with the approval on the, on the pylon signs or the, the street-side signs? And then we need clarification, again, through the planning office.
Okay, so, and.
What the facade's going to look like.
We'll know when you guys know, right? Basically, okay.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, good luck. Thank you for clarification.
Did you sign in?
Oops.
You know what?
I didn't have a, I started to, and then I didn't see a pen.
Okay, so that brings us through items five on our agenda, consent agenda. Items will move on to the public hearing section of our agenda, which is item six A. If we could read item six A into the agenda, into the minutes.
Advantage signs, on behalf of Moritomo, request ADR approval for the replacement of an internally illuminated wall sign at thirty, thirty-two Fort Eddie Road in the Gateway Performance District. This was pulled because the sign had already been installed, and my understanding is they were charged the, the fee for having it previously installed. ADR had no issues with the actual application. They recommended approval as submitted.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Clarification? No? Advantage signs, gosh.
Again.
Mm-hmm. I won't say that on, I won't say that on the record. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve that? Oh, sorry.
It's under public hearings.
Okay, so we open public hearing.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or concerns about this sign application? No, we'll close the public hearing. We'll make a motion, if someone would like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Six B, if we could read that into the record?
Gilberto Reyes, on behalf of El Grande Mexican Restaurant, request ADR approval for the installation of a pergola over established outdoor seating at twenty-two Loudon Road in the Gateway Performance District. This is under public hearings because it's a billing permit in Performance District. My understanding is ADR recommended approval as submitted.
Okay, is the applicant here? Yep, you can come on up. You don't have to if you don't want to. Let's, let's see if we have any questions. I do have a, I do actually have a question. Good, how are you? If you could just state your name for the record?
Gilberto Reyes.
Okay, Gilbert. So I'm looking at the pictures that you've shown.
Sure.
Beautiful-looking pictures. So the pergola, no, that's not it. Beautiful, I saw you look up there. I was wondering if it was on. So beautiful-looking pergola, I'm guessing that it's from another location. Is that, is that what you're proposing or similar?
Yes, pretty much. It's going to look the same, except it's not going to be arches.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll do this, this one in Salem.
Yep.
Location.
Yep.
And pretty much it's going to be, kind of like, like, look like this.
So straight up, but it's still, it'll still have that same feel as stucco and.
Decoration around.
The big thick, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
We'll go to recommendation with the building department, like, brace it up, you know, for the window. It's more like decoration.
Yep.
Like on top of the columns.
Yep.
It's not like touch the building, nothing. It's only like that.
Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Reyes?
Will this help keep the sun off my margaritas?
Well, we have to every, everything get in before the winter here. No, no, everything's going to be the same.
The right, the right answer to that is you got to drink faster. You got to drink your margarita faster.
Or they'll get it in before winter, and he can sit outside, and it won't melt.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Reyes? Thank you very much. We're good. You're good. Thank you.
If you would, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, straight through application for the construction of a pergola, patio pergola for a seating area or external to the building. Any other questions or comments for staff, anything? Nope? Would someone like to make a motion to approve, what's that?
Close the meeting.
Thank you. Close the public hearing. I'm not used to that with. That's the reason, that's the reason. So we close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that application as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck with that. Looks great.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so item six C on our agenda, if we could read that into the record?
MD Architects, on behalf of VCA Real Property Acquisition Corporation, request ADR approval for the installation of a screening fence and two concrete pads for the purpose of supporting a mobile MRI trailer at one Inter Veil Road in the Gateway Performance District. So I will give you a summary here. This, through no fault, through no fault of their own, they were not on the ADR agenda, so ADR did not actually get a chance to review it. However, it's really only billing pads, it's billing permit for billing pads, so there's not really much to review.
More importantly, can we blame Sam?
It's a hundred percent his fault.
Okay. Let's throw Sam under the bus whenever we can.
Even if he was here, we'd throw him under the bus. So anyway, we, we, we didn't want to penalize them by a month for not having put them on the agenda again for concrete pads, so.
We can, we can probably handle that.
Yeah, we, we were recommending approval of it. We didn't know if you wanted to send it subject to ADR, having looked at it, at the fences or the signs or anything.
It's just a vinyl fence, right? That's all, like a stockade fence?
Correct, correct.
I wasn't sure where one inter veil road was when I looked at this the other night. I was quite sure it was up by the hospital. I was thinking it was a hospital or medical center. I didn't realize it was a.
Animal MRI?
It was a caves, an animal MRI.
They gave it away, is when they said they weren't going to breed any.
Yes, yeah. What exactly is going on here? What exactly is going on here? I missed that. Okay, is the applicant here? Well, sorry? Okay, so no concerns from staff as far as this goes? I think it looked pretty straightforward.
To open and close the meeting?
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to, open, open the meeting? Meeting's open. Close them. Any public hearing comments? No public comments, we'll close the meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that application as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second.
Clarification? They have two options for fence. Was there one that was the recommendation on the drawings, has a chain link and a vinyl?
Oh, look. ADR didn't see it.
Good catch, Jeff.
ADR didn't see it, so.
Right.
So I'd say vinyl.
That's up to you. Oh, so it's so funny. I wasn't going to say that. I don't think the vinyl is any different than looking at the mobile vehicle, quite honestly.
It's also behind the building.
Huh?
It's also behind the building.
Right, I mean, I just, I mean, if they need a fence that, I mean, I didn't, I was looking at this, and I'm like, so what's the difference? But whatever that mobile unit is, is pretty much a fence. I mean, it's a white.
I just like hiding the bottom with the wheels and everything, so the top of it looks like part of a building instead of a truck parked out back. That's why I like the vinyl.
It is out back. I thought the dumpsters kind of did that. Anyway.
I'm not sure.
That's just like a, just whatever. I just thought it would, I didn't, if they need the fence.
Want to give them the option?
Yeah.
Give them the option or?
I don't think it's a big deal other way. I don't think the vinyl helps.
Concern either way.
I just like hiding the bottom with the wheels and everything, so the top of it looks like part of a building instead of a truck parked out back. That's why I like the vinyl.
I thought the dumpsters kind of did that. Anyway.
I'm not sure.
That's just like a, just whatever. I just thought it would, I didn't, if they need the fence.
Want to give them the option? Give them the option or?
I don't think it's a big deal other way. I don't think the vinyl helps.
Concern either way.
Guess I'm the lonely voice.
We'll, we'll let, we'll let the applicant decide either vinyl or chain link. How about that? So we've got a motion in a second. We're not going to modify it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That closes that section of the, of the agenda for us tonight and moves us on to the site plans, subdivisions, conditional use permits. The meat and potatoes of tonight's meeting will start off with item seven A. If we could read that into the record?
TF Burner, on behalf of the Jobin Family Trust, request an amendment to a previously approved minor subdivision plan to request a waiver to allow overhead utilities at one twenty-four and one twenty-eight Horse Hill Road in the open space residential district. I will give a short summary.
Yes, please.
So this, this house was constructed last fall, I believe, months ago, and when we went out to give the CO, when city staff went out to give the CO, they saw that the pole was on the property and wasn't on the plan, and so we told them, you need to move the pole and put it underground or request a waiver from the board to have the pole above ground in that location. And so here we are.
Here we are. So I, I will tell you, I mean, it's our, you know it, Tim, it's our policy for, for new construction underground, so I, I got to be swayed, I guess, at this point. But if you're here to sway me, you tell me why we should give you a waiver, but. Let me get your name for the record if we could first.
Sure, my name's Tim Burner, TF Burner Incorporated. We're here on behalf of the applicant. The original applicant was the Jobin Family Trust. Preferred Homes was the builder of the houses. The houses have been sold. People are living in there. So this is an amendment to the previously approved application. If you look at the plans, if you have them available to you, there was an issue with, with Unitil. We assumed that Unitil puts poles in all the time and that, you know, they knew where to put them, so we, the builders said, you know, go ahead and put the poles in, and we'll go underground from the poles, which is typically how it's done. Unitil put the poles in, and they just put them just over the line onto private property. So the backside of the pole away from the road is in, in one lot, it's two-point-nine feet, and the other lot's two-point-four feet to the back. So if you run the lines, there's two and a half feet too much of overhead utilities. If they had slid the poles two and a half feet closer to the right-of-way, they wouldn't, we wouldn't be here tonight. So nobody really caught it, put the, put the underground in, the underground's all in, built the houses, went to get the CO, and so we said, boy, those poles look awful tight, and required a survey. So we surveyed it and found that they're two and a half feet inside. Discussion began with the Unitil, and Unitil's position was that the city, whenever possible, likes the poles to be outside of the right-of-way. Because, especially in downtown in the city, it's hard enough to plow the sidewalks. The right-of-way line is at the back of the sidewalk. So if you'll notice, most of the poles are in the sidewalk, and if you try to plow the sidewalk, the pole's in the way. So they've been told numerous times by city staff to put the pole on, on the other side of the right-of-way line whenever possible. That's what they're telling the landowners now, is that, we, we're always told by the city to put the pole on, on the private property side of the right-of-way line. So we're stuck. They're not willing to move the poles and. They're not willing to move the poles and so we're, we're kinda stuck here with, with no direction. There's, there's another situation right up the street that just for whatever reason, Unitil put just, just up the road from here and then they just put the pole just, just on the inside of the line, so two feet over from where it is here. And they're not here before you and we are and without staking it out, it's pretty hard to
So I, I guess I misunderstood. I, in reading it, I thought that the, I thought that the, the pole was put in and the electricity to the houses was overhead, but the electricity is underground.
Correct.
And it's the pole that's the issue.
Yeah, the two and a half feet, the pole's too far inside the property.
Yes, please.
So, um, we, in the past have not, whether it was in or outside the property line, was not part of the consideration when we first were made aware of this. It was the fact that they, the pole, there was an existing pole at the corner of the property at the southwest end. And then we're not sure why there was a pole across the street, that they added another pole, crossed the street, and then they went underground from there. So we said, they had a pole on the right side of the street, why didn't they just use this pole to run the utilities to both houses? Because there's two houses and both of them were supposed to have poles underground. In other subdivisions, we haven't allowed them to put them either in the right of way or on the private property. We've had them go underground. So I'm, I'm also, no, I'm not sure who from the city is telling them that they have to put them on private property. We certainly never have in planning or engineering. I'm not sure who they're saying, because when they told us, they said to us that they wanted them on the private property because, I can't remember even exactly why, something about the closeness in the right of way and hitting cars, but when they told us that, they did not present it as, hey, you guys are always telling us to put it on private property. They said that's where they preferred them. So I'm not sure who from the city might have told them that or what department or what division. It wasn't any of us. We told, we actually had a special meeting with Unitil that said, look, if they're not on the plan, then that's not where they go. We, we specifically asked for utility plans to look specifically at this issue. And the utility plan did not show any overhead poles going over the, over the road. So we had told them, look, either route it from the, this pole you have on your existing side or go, you know, burrow under and go under the road the way we've made a lot of other people do. At this point, I think, you know, we don't necessarily have a recommendation, but I just thought you should hear from our perspective how, how the events unfolded. It really didn't have to do with the location inside or out of the right of way. It just had to do with the fact that, that wasn't on the plan, whether it was inside or outside the right of way, it wasn't on the plan at all.
No questions, thank you. All right.
Having spent thirty-five years in a utility, one of the reasons that you like to put poles on private property is that the public requirement, if a city comes along and has to widen the road, then the public requirement doesn't come into play and you're not, the utility's not burdened with the expense of moving the poles. In this particular case, I was involved with this early on. This came up because this is technically a subdivision. It's two houses, not one. From River Hill to the Red Barn on Horse Hill, there are probably no fewer than fifteen road crossings because the electric is served from the west side of the highway and these houses were built on the east side of the highway. I may be off, but it's the other side. So I, looking at this, I personally believe that this waiver is probably the way to go because it's a mess and this is not gonna make a huge difference on anything. The developer, I believe, met their requirement of going underground from the pole to their, to their house. It's a matter of where's the pole and to undo this would be more difficult than doing it right in the first place. So I would, I would recommend that we grant the waiver.
Okay.
When we get to that point.
Saw some other hands, Matt?
Should there be some sort of a condition that if they are to move these poles at some point, that they be corrected?
We can make that as a condition of approval, yeah. Could do that. Right? I don't wanna speak for planning, but it's a cluster, it's opened up a hole.
Difficult, because it's pretty much putting a condition on Unitil and it's gonna end up in a private property subdivision plan. So it's it's gonna be difficult to track that.
It's macrame.
Okay.
So no. I was wondering if it would be too difficult.
Yeah.
Jeff?
David.
David?
No, I, I think you answered my question.
Okay.
I guess my thing is, is if we do this waiver, I think we need to reach out to Unitil and there needs to be a very clear, whether it's a memo or whatever, understanding what the city expects and stakeout occurs on these locations prior to a poll and so, because next time around, Unitil's pulling it out at their cost.
Yep.
Because it's, doesn't meet our standard.
Yep.
And if they put it in wrong, it's no different than when I work, you know, similar, I work on engineering jobs. Utility company comes out, puts the pole in the wrong place. It's on them. You come back, pull it out, put it in the right place, especially if you didn't stake it first. So I mean, I feel here for the owner. Because it's gonna be onerous for them to try and pay to move all this stuff. And granted, it's two foot nine. It's not like we're talking halfway up. Now granted, it does, I mean, even if they put the pole on the right of way line or in the right of way, we still would've had the overhead to that side of the street. So that part's irrelevant. Two foot nine, two foot four, whatever it is, does not really give me heartburn. The heartburn is that Unitil installed without
I don't recall this happening. I mean, I don't, I don't remember this. Have we had this happen before?
What specifically are you asking? Has Unitil put the
Has Unitil put them in the wrong spots?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm not sure putting it in the wrong spot is the point. There was there was no, no, usually on a plan, they will say, this is the utility, here's the pole, it's going overhead or underground and and that's how the, the property is being served. In this case, there is just the fact that they put a pole anywhere and crossed the road is what, you know.
Is what the issue is.
Right, exactly. Whether it was inside or outside the right of way.
Because if we had a choice, if we had to, we might have said, put it at the property line, serve the pole, so we only had one pole rather than two, if that was the method that had to be done, rather than going under, et cetera.
Okay, any other questions from the board? No? Remember the audience have any questions? No? Anybody left? Any other comments from staff? If not, we will, if, would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver or, or deny the, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Jeff. Everybody knows to close the public hearing except me. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, Tim.
Is this the symbol?
Yeah.
Close it.
Close it.
So we'll stop picking on you.
We've got a motion on the table to grant the waiver. Would someone like to second that? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. See? I didn't read quite close enough. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck. Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, hang on just a second. I do, I, I wanna make mention that as a, as a, sorry, I meant to, meant to do this when we did it and I, I apologize. So if the board votes to grant the waiver, staff recommends that the board reference the criteria of RSA six seventy-four forty-four one, which states that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and waiver would be contrary to the spirit and intent of the, would not be contrary, would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. So, do I have to open public hearing again and make, no, okay. So I just wanna put that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to item seven B on our agenda, if we could.
Will Cox and Barton on behalf of NHT twenty twenty-two LLC requests major site plan approval for modifications to an existing parking lot at eighty-one Hall Street in the Opportunity Quarter Performance District. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we, we have a public hearing for this, so let's get a quick staff update if we could. After we open the public hearing, how about that?
Sure. They're basically adding parking spaces. I don't think we had any significant issues with it. It's, you know, they're removing some landscaping and putting in some parking spaces. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, um, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Thank you, I'm Cynthia Terio with Will Cox and Barton.
Hold on.
Just for the record, you're not Aaron Lambert, so I just wanna make sure everybody doesn't
So you should determine the application complete first.
Okay.
All the others.
I'm sorry.
Wasn't determined complete last month.
And not development.
It's from a couple months ago, isn't it?
It was last month. Never mind. It's already determined complete. I thought it was older than that, I apologize.
So it's already been determined complete, not a development of regional impact. So we will open the public hearing and welcome to the table. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Cynthia Terio with Will Cox and Barton.
Okay, Cynthia, go ahead and give us a quick overview of this project if you could.
Sure, of course. Um, so the, the owner of the building is proposing a change of use from regular office to medical offices. And also, as Heather mentioned, we are changing the parking around the building and also adding a loading dock. And then there'll be some landscaping as part of the project as well.
Okay, and this is, just struggling, this is behind the residence in?
Correct.
Right? Behind, yeah.
Behind the residence here.
Correct.
Okay, Jeff?
I do have a question. So on the, call it, north side of the building is where your loading dock's gonna be. What size vehicles do they know? For, the reason I'm asking is, this now changes kind of the layout there. Has a truck turning template been developed to actually show that the truck can come around the building, pull into the loading dock and then leave the facility?
We did then, we did not submit truck turning, I guess it's. It doesn't significantly change the curving around the building. But we can certainly submit that if that's necessary.
I, I'm just kinda, I'm just looking at it, it looks tight, so I'm just trying to kind of
It's gonna be mostly used, my understanding, for, you know, FedEx deliveries, UPS, that type of thing.
So not trailer trucks?
It's not my understanding.
Jeff, where? On the north side of the building?
Yeah, that hatched area next to the one-way flow.
Yeah.
Arrow there. That wasn't previously
The side that doesn't have any parking.
Right.
Adjacent.
And I think that there is a little cut in of the curb. I just, it, looking at the site, it looks tight for someone to come around, make the left-hand turn, pull into that and then pull back out, make another sharp left turn, then to make an immediate right turn to get to the entrance. So I just wanna make sure that they're not gonna get a truck in there driving up and over islands and, or having to back up or anything to make the movement out. So if they've done them and can submit them for engineering's review, we can make that a condition that
Yep, if you could, that would be great.
You know.
Just remind me, we get to that point, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Suzanne?
So I guess I would question, why has the landscape plan not been submitted?
Yep.
And then the other question is twenty feet is not close enough to be considered part of what the planting requirement is. I believe it was ten feet? Isn't it ten feet? Because we're, I mean, we're looking towards providing shade on the parking lot and twenty feet does not achieve that.
Our regulations are twenty feet.
Well, then we need to change it. I mean, you cannot, that is ridiculous. Twenty feet is like not gonna provide shade on the parking lot. We'll be dead.
That's, that's a change. We need to make it.
We need to make that change. I thought it was ten feet. I thought you had to have it within ten feet. In resident, like in neighborhoods? In neighborhoods, when you do your tree, street tree planting.
We do it within ten feet because it's within the right of way.
Right.
But on, on private properties, it's twenty feet.
Great. So, but, but going back to like, why has the landscape plan not been submitted and why have the details for that? Like what are the plants that you're going to be using to fulfill that requirement of those feet, trees that are already existing within twenty feet?
Sure. Um, so we, we did submit a landscape plan. It was just this week, however, so perhaps you've been seeing
Yeah, it didn't make it on.
Yeah. So we do have one in front of the planning board right now.
So they'll need to review that.
Correct.
Okay.
So any recommendations, Suzanne, to, to staff as far as if, if it's been submitted and we don't have it in our packets and haven't looked at it, any suggestions on what you wanna, what you wanna see here?
Well, I guess they have to, have to look at it first to see if the counts match up. I mean, that takes a bit of time. You can't submit it a week before the planning board meeting.
Right, there was no time to review it.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Okay, any other questions? I'm gonna ask the audience because there's nobody here, so no other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. We'll close the public hearing. So in your packet, we have got three point one is grant ADR approval for the proposed site plan for the parking lot subdivision at, a lot revision at eighty-one Hall Street. Would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval for the proposed site changes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Three point two is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed parking lot revisions at eighty-one Hall Street subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one, two, and three, subsequent conditions one, two, three.
Do you wanna make it a precedent condition?
Tell me, staff, precedent or subsequent conditions regarding the reviewing, reviewing the truck turning?
Heather's kinda taken over this project, so.
Well, I just see that the landscape plan is in precedent, so I'm thinking the truck turns would be
So put it in precedent.
Yeah.
Okay, so four would be applicant to provide truck turning templates for review by, and approval of engineering.
I thought that was under, isn't there a comment on that? Or no, you're asking for that. I thought there was already a comment on that one. I'm not seeing it.
I didn't see a comment anywhere.
Okay, I apologize. I thought it was already there.
Sorry, I missed, I'm sorry, I missed subsequent condition four as well, which is on the next page, so just for the record, that was gonna be precedent conditions one, two, three, the addition of four, which Jeff just outlined and subsequent conditions one, two, three, and four. Would, any other changes, any discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set.
Great, thank you.
Little bit of homework, not too bad. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and again, for the record, seven C and seven D have been postponed.
Those should be, you should make motions about those.
And we'll take a motion to, uh, we're gonna do them both, so we'll make a motion to postpone item seven C, which is Will Cox and Barton on behalf of Arts Alley LLC to no date certain. Would someone like to make a motion to postpone that hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Seven D is to postpone the application by Capella Realty Trust for a major site plan approval and minor subdivision approval for an age restricted residential development. Would someone like to make a motion to postpone that to the September twenty-first planning board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I'll do it for our site plan and public divisions. We've got a quick review of the Concord next in our in our agenda here for the next item. I'm sure we all went to the three meetings that were held, and this is an overview, but just in case.
I went to one.
I missed both of them.
Nobody was at the phase one presentations.
I wasn't, that was
You were?
On the Zoom?
Yeah, well, the, so last week there were phase one presentation, phase, there was a phase one presentation. I think the one you were at was phase two. Was that where we were talking about the specific district?
It was the very first meeting.
Yeah, that was phase two.
Okay.
So this is, um, and I, I'm gonna try to be quick, but this is actually a fairly long presentation. I wanted to make sure the board was aware of what was out there and what, uh, what the public was looking at. I'm, I'll try to be quick. You know a lot of it already anyway. But since I knew it was gonna be a short meeting, I was gonna take this opportunity to show you the presentation. I'm not gonna give the whole thing in full. You can, so the presentation that was last night was recorded by Concord TV and that will be online hopefully by the end of the week. Will be available on the city website, the project website as a YouTube video. So I, I'm gonna go through it pretty quickly, but you can also check it out online. I'm gonna try to log on here. Is this ex-Concord guest or?
Heather, may I ask a question while you're doing that?
Yeah, um, no, because I can barely do it without, without the question that you're gonna
That's our zeros.
Concord? Oh, oh, the past, okay, C, sorry.
Those are inside head things.
Oh, I'm doing it wrong. See, I'm, I can't even do it with It's the worst password ever. It is.
It's very secure.
Taped onto the
Like if it's taped right there, you don't have to make it difficult.
You just make it Concord one.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay. It's Concord with some, the O's are actually zeros, but like-
And a backslash and a space and a dot.
A dot.
A dot.
You're on TV. I don't know that you should be giving out passes.
They're gonna change it tomorrow.
They just have to come and look at the computer.
They're gonna have to come and take the tape off.
You just need to show up and take the tape off. It's a label.
They're gonna be hacked.
Okay, you may now ask me a question.
Job security counselor Pierce.
Yep.
For IT.
You have to hire an IT guy.
Ask me a question.
This is happening.
Dear, what happened?
Did you have a question?
There it goes.
I did. Uh, there was a article in the paper today, maybe it was yesterday, about requirements of the new state planning guidelines.
Sure.
Planning and zoning. Have you heard anything?
Yep.
About that? And are those in line with Concord Next? Do we, do we know what the requirements will be?
Most of those things were geared towards, um, municipalities that, that don't have the type of regulatory structure that are processed that we have.
They don't have a crack team like we do. I'll say it for you. As I read through it, I said, we do that, we do that, we do that.
At least till Sam left.
No.
I'm, I wanna start studying for the planning board member test.
Oh, you, that would be wonderful. I would love that.
There is one.
Yes, yeah, there is.
There's a test.
It's not required to take it.
You're not required to take it.
Kind of like a motion of group dissection, El Rodeo.
Yeah, El Rodeo.
Under the patio.
Under the pergola, please. Um, most of that has to do with process and not with actual zoning. So yes, all of that is already incorporated into how we do things in Concord. So, yeah, none, none of that really affects us too much.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, there, there is now though, a test for zoning boards and planning boards. It's not a required test, but you, you get like certified if you take it, um, and it's for continuing education purposes.
And if you don't pass, you still get, you just don't tell me.
We fire you. It's not required.
Yeah, so you're gonna go and not pass?
They take away your name tag.
I'll pass.
Yeah, get a little star next year.
Get a little asterisk.
All right, Heather.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to go through this pretty quickly, so.
Pretty quickly's good.
It's, it's-
Very good.
Yeah. Um, well, let me ask this.
Take your time, I'm curious.
Do you plan to watch it? Because if you plan to watch it, I'll, it'll encourage me to go even quicker.
Be careful.
Yeah, I knew that was gonna come up if you offered that.
There's a lot of information, and, uh, I tried to organize it based on district and based on, um, how it's organized in the actual code. So I'm gonna start with the big picture, with the actual map, and then we'll kinda work our way through the code and into, into some of the details. This is just a summary. There's a lot of stuff in there. Um, have to give probably four or five more meetings to, to get all, to get down to all of it. Um, but this is a summary, and there are documents online that are intended to sort of help you digest, digest this.
Doesn't sound like it's going too quick yet.
Yeah.
When's the quickness start?
There's only like seventy-five slides, so. So the first, the first thing I wanna point out is that the district naming conventions are changed. Um, we've got rural residential, which is outside the urban growth boundary, residential, which is everything inside the urban growth boundary, and then MX, which is all the mixed-use districts, like, like the CBP is now called the MX CB. So basically, everything downtown is an MX district. Um, there were two new districts that were created, um, uh, in, yeah, outside the urban growth boundary. We created, I may have mentioned before, the open space district to sort of demonstrate, there's a lot of land that's under conservation easement. It's not developable, um, and the city protects an awful lot of land. Uh, I think I might have mentioned, we pulled out the watershed district. It used to be an overlay with the RO, except all the standards were completely different. So now it's, it already was its own district. We just officially made it its own district, so people aren't confused by looking at two districts when they, they both don't apply. We also tried to eliminate split districts outside the urban growth boundary, so, uh, previously, uh, the city had used the open space, the RO district as kind of a buffer for a lot of natural resources. Uh, at the time that that was done, initiated, or created, was before there were other, uh, natural resource protections in the state. So now we have shoreline protection at the state level, shoreline protection at the city level, wetland buffers at the state level. You know, there are a lot more protections at the state level and at the city level than we had at that time. So we're trying to just rely on those regulations that are exist to make it easier for property owners that don't, so they don't, aren't having all these split districts all around the city. And the, also, but that district boundary was not surveyed. It's, I'm not gonna say that it's arbitrary, but these aren't surveyed lines. So they're, they're general lines that are placed on the map that are, that are affecting how people can develop their property. You know, it's kind of like a best guess. This is where we think the RO district should be, um, or the, the protection should start. So, uh, anyway, we tried to, we eliminated that and threw out most of the city as we could, uh, to rely more on other regulations and not have all these split districts everywhere, which is difficult to plan with. This is everything I just said. See, we can skip right through that. Uh, this is just what the district pages are looking like. Every, so every single district you see here, um, is having a, one of these pages, and they each have these four sections that you're seeing up on the screen. On the left was, is the district, the actual, um, district standards. I'm looking for a, a-
Pointer.
Can you catch? What? No, don't throw that at me. I will embarrassingly not catch it. Let me make sure I thought of that. Thanks. So, th- these are all hyperlinks in the document as well, so each one of these headings has a hyperlink. So if you have a question about that section, you can just go straight there. So, well, I'll talk more about this a little bit later, but these are basic, the basic standards that are different for each district, and you're gonna find them on these pages. Summary, we, we simplified and streamlined the use tables. So we went from like twenty-some pages down to four. We didn't eliminate any uses. We didn't add any uses. We just grouped them into more general categories, which can be found and literally listed elsewhere in the code if you do wanna look at every single absolute, absolute use. We also tried to eliminate special exceptions as much as possible because a lot of those are just, a lot of those situations are more appropriate as conditional use permits with the planning board, um, so that people don't have to go to the zoning board for, for various things. They, it, in today's world, we'd probably think most of them are pretty minor anyway. Parking, same thing. We streamlined it. We made it more simple. We, we collapsed things into bigger categories, so there, we don't now have like eleven manufacturing uses listed. There's like one or two. Um, so we tried to simplify that and make it easier to read. Uh, so these are some, in the rural residential districts, general things. There are very few changes outside. I think you all knew that. Um, we made ADUs a lot easier to do. In the current code, they're like six hundred to seven hundred fifty square feet, that's it. That's all you get. Uh, if it's more or less, you don't comply, and they have to be attached. In the proposed code, they can be detached or attached. They can be any, any, there's no minimum, so they can be as small as you legally can do it in accordance with the building code. The maximum is nine hundred square feet. We relaxed the cluster provisions to make them more cluster-like and less sort of suburban sprawling-like. Um, and we, uh, so our, the RT district, which was the RM district, we said, so typically in the current code, if you have, you'd need forty thousand square feet of area to subdivide if you don't have utility connections. We said, hey, if DES says that the soils could support septic, and DES says you can do this on a thirty thousand square foot lot, we're gonna by right let you subdivide with a smaller, with what DES is, is in support of for what that lot can handle. Because that, this district is our transitional district where we're saying it's appropriate to have density and to have, uh, extend infrastructure. So we wanted to make it easier for people to be able to subdivide in those areas. It's not a huge difference. It's, you know, maybe ten to fifteen thousand square feet less, and you can subdivide. The residential district standards, the main things we did there, um, were, we revised the dimensional standards to more appropriately reflect the districts. You may recall when we started, we did an analysis of the neighborhoods and saw how much non, non-compliance there was, non-conformity with all the district standards. Um, so we low, basically lowered those to capture as many, uh, as many lots as possible in each district without encouraging or allowing, um, a lot splits. So if you, if you look at the size of most of the lots, that's what, the number we picked for the lot. If you see a double lot, it may seem to be a double lot, but then you actually check in the existing code, and you can't subdivide it because it doesn't have the frontage or the lot area. We, in accordance with the proposed code, that lot could now be subdivided and, uh, into two lots and be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, so the district naming conventions reflect what the lot area needed for subdivision is. So for instance, in the R-seven district, I'm just gonna jump forward here. Uh, I can't even see that. My vision's not good enough. The R, the R-seven district, you would need seven thousand square feet to be compliant. Um, that is most similar to, in many cases, the RM district. Uh, and so you can see that this chart is designed to sort of help you see the differences in the lot areas and the dimensional standards uh, that were, that were made. Um, I'm gonna go back another sec. So also side lots. A lot of people have to get variances for porches, uh, garages, sheds, additions on their houses because there's so much non-conformity on their lot that they, their existing house, if they wanna do something consistent with it, they're gonna need a variance. Um, so to help alleviate that, and it doesn't fix the problem because there is so much non-conformity even under the proposed code, but to help alleviate that, we said, okay, we're gonna say you need a five-foot minimum on each side, and then you could make up the difference of the requirement however you want. So if a twenty-foot setback is required, you have to have five here, five here, and then you can provide the difference however you can. Maybe it's, you know, six here and a fourteen here, maybe it's, uh, you know, so however, however you can break that up, that's designed to give you the flexibility to help alleviate some of those variances.
So that's five on the front if you want it?
No, not the front. It's the sides.
That's the sides.
Yeah, so you might have-
Fronts don't change?
Excuse me?
Fronts won't change?
The fronts were, uh, reduced, but, and there's also an ability to encroach to some degree for some of these features, which wa, which wasn't there before either. So you're allowed to encroach in the front yard, the front setback, I think up to like five feet. So mo, most of the, those, there's no variability in the front. It's just, it is what it is. But on the sides, there's gonna be a total, and whatever that total is, you can make, make it however you, however you can.
So some of the discussion we had originally when we, when they first came to the, to the planning board, or we, we first met with the Code Next people way back, however many years ago. One of them was the, the uniformity or the ability to, to keep that neighborhood feel with some of the neighborhood. So if on a, on a street, you've got three or four houses, or five or six houses that have got front porches that come up right to a specific point, and then one house that doesn't, that, is that one house gonna be able to, to, to put a porch on to conform with the, with the other houses in the neighborhood or?
That, that is the intent and that is the goal. So we'll have to see in practice.
But it's still through variance at that point?
Not un, under the proposed, uh, currently, yes. Under the proposed code, it's designed to address a lot of those issues without the need for variances.
Okay.
Is it gonna be a hundred percent? No, because like I said, there, there is a lot of non-conformity.
Okay.
We'll only see through practice if those numbers still need to be adjusted, or, or if they, if we got close enough that it, it helped enough people.
Yeah. Okay.
So we added design standards. Most of these design standards, you can get a conditional use permit from the board if you, if they don't work for you. Um, but we added them to try to, uh, provide, to make sure we had some aesthetic standards to maintain that character. Um, we didn't want people sort of taking advantage of the increased flexibility and, you know, causing the, the character to deteriorate of the neighborhoods.
What's the definition of a front porch in that design standard?
So there's these-
A porch or a step, or is it a porch and a step?
There's, there's two, there's two options. There's a porch or a stoop is what it's called in the code. And here, it's showing you, I can't see it because I made it so small, but this is showing you one of the options, and their minimum design, like, it's not subjective, so it has to be at least like four and a half feet. This, and it has to be at least, you know, six feet this way, you know, so there's standards to meet so that people understand exactly what they need to provide. And, so you can either provide that or the, or the stoop, which has different standards. So it's like, you can choose one. I'm gonna do this or I'm gonna do that. Of course, if you're gonna do something that exceeds both of them, you're-
Exceeding's fine, unless it's not.
Right. Um, I'm gonna move on. Again, these tables were created to, they, I just have to apologize. These don't match the, the colors of the districts on the maps. I, I color-coded these specifically to help me, uh, and others to understand how the districts compare. So there, I made more of a change in the colors to, to show you how they compare, but, uh, so what this also demonstrates and what you may be aware of, like for instance, like in the RN district, there's different standards based on whether you wanna do a single family, a duplex, or a multifamily. So it's sort of deceptively, you're thinking you have this one district, but you actually have three districts in there, uh, depending on what you wanna do. In the new code, it's the same standards whether, no matter what it is. So there's only one. So that's why you're seeing here, for instance, that there's three based on what, you know, what you're gonna do. And this is the proposed, there's only the one. So you can see that we sort of eliminated a lot of, uh, what I would maybe call pretend districts or faux districts, just because there were so many, um, it was so complicated. There's so many variations about what it would be. If you're gonna do this, it's this. If you're gonna do that, it's that. We eliminated all that. It just, it is what it is, regardless of what you're gonna do. This is comparing the mixed-use districts. Probably the biggest change is in the OCP, where, um, you know, the standards that are in there weren't really conducive to creating the type of development we have in our master plans. So we reduced all of those to help create more of the small-scale urban development that we say that we want in those districts. Um, this is a really important page. I'm not gonna go through it with you guys because I think you sort of understand the basic premise already, uh, but it's important for the public to understand how the unit allocation is working. Um, so instead of having single-family, duplex, multi, you know, multifamily, we don't have those designations now. You're getting the number of units based on the frontage that you have. So, and how that number was come up with was a base of two for every lot that has basically compliant. So if you need fifty feet of frontage, the requirement is gonna be that you get one unit per twenty or twenty-five feet of frontage. So if you have sixty feet of frontage and the requirement is one per twenty, you can actually get three units. If you've got eighty feet of frontage, you could actually get four units. But if you just comply with that basic, uh, standard of fifty feet, you're gonna get two units by right, everywhere, pretty much. If you have a non-compliant lot and you only have thirty feet, you're still allowed, even though you're non-compliant with everything, to have a unit, one unit, uh, 'cause that's how much, you don't have enough frontage for two units. Uh, the, the image, the graphic on the right is showing that you can have that unit any, any, any of these different ways that you can provide, that you'd like to provide. They can be attached, detached, above a garage, in a house. You know, you do, split your house this way or that way. If you, if you're allowed four units, you could actually do two units of two duplexes. So two complete separate structures of duplexes, or you can do four little cottages on your property.
Question?
Yep.
Does this address the new fad of tiny houses? Or is that, our building code says you gotta build a minimum square foot, and so it doesn't apply?
There, so it, it could potentially a, address that because there's no minimum for the number of houses. So if you were allowed four units on your lot, you could provide four tiny, tiny houses.
Start a fresh lot with a tiny house?
Yep. Well, it depends how many, how many units you're allowed on the lot, but yes, you could potentially do that. Now, if you were to, you're not allowed to condo, um-
I'm just saying if you had one lot and you wanna put one tiny house on it.
Yep.
It's covered into this because I don't know that-
You could do that now.
I thought, I thought we had minimum square footages that didn't fit the sizes of-
Not for houses. For apartments, we do.
I must have misunderstood. I thought we had a certain size, like a hundred square feet.
No, we don't regulate single-family homes like that. The problem with tiny homes is people want them to be mobile.
Right.
And, and that's what we don't, we still don't allow. If you're gonna be mobile, you need to be in like, uh, uh-
Mobile home park.
No, those are not mobile. Those are stationary. You need to be in a recreational vehicle park, which we don't even have any in Concord, I don't believe. Um, so yeah, mobile home parks are stationary. You're allowed in mobile home park, but they, they have to be stationary. Um, so, but I'll get more into that.
No, no, that's fine. I just, I didn't mean to detract. I just, you were talking about sizes and units, and it made me think of it.
And we're, we're not talking detached garages in those pictures. Those are ADUs, right?
Well, so this picture here is showing a detached garage with a, with a unit above.
What's the one to the left of it? Is that a detached garage?
This is an atta, this is a, a, an attached, um, unit. The yellow parts, the unit.
Right, but what's the, is there a garage over to the right of that?
Yes, that's the, this is the garage.
It's almost as if it's the same lot. It's showing you the options.
Different options.
Right, exactly. If you, if you had this configuration of a house and a garage, you could do an attachment to your house.
Top left is two unit, is two, is that two units? Is, I guess my question is, is the garage considered a unit?
No.
No.
Not unless you convert it into a, a living unit.
Perfect, thank you. Or if it's a workshop or-
Yeah, a workshop wouldn't count as a unit, or livable area even for that matter.
You were gonna mention something about condo. Did you use, use, use the word condo?
Well, because of, when, you know, someone could say, I'm gonna build like fifteen tiny, tiny homes, but, you know, unless you're gonna condo it, which means that you have to actually provide separate infrastructure, separate water infrastructure to each one. Um, I, I'm sorry, what I was gonna say, which was not really applicable to what he was saying, is that ADUs cannot be condoed per state statute. So if you wanna do an ADU, it has to be all-in-one ownership. In most of these cases, we're assuming that they're all-in-one- In most of these cases, we're assuming that they're all in one ownership. If they wanna do separate ownerships or condos, then they have to provide the water and sewer hookups for those units. You can't be all on one service or on one lot. So mixed-use, no longer a density maximum in mixed-use districts. So for all the mixed-use districts, it's basically the area setback height and parking requirements that are gonna limit what you can do on the lot. So there's nothing that says, you know, you can have a max of twelve, or fourteen, or sixteen. Now we're saying you've gotta be thirty-five feet tall and you gotta have this, these setbacks and, you know, you gotta provide the parking that's required. So that's true for all the MX districts in the proposed code. OCP district changes, again, as I was mentioning, those, some of the biggest changes were in OCP to allow that type of development we have in our master plans. We eliminated the parking requirements for the OCP similarly to how they are eliminated for the CBP, because OCP is intended to be really the highest-density urban district that we have, according to our master plans. We also eliminated parking for the CIV, mostly because the CI, the civic, CIV, is all municipal or government property, and they're not bound by our regulations anyway. So we know they're gonna provide the parking, and we also know they're not really gonna care what our requirements are, because they're gonna provide what they wanna provide. So new block and street standards in the OC District, again, to try to create, to, to create through regulation that kind of finer urban development pattern.
On that, do we have any sort of standards on curb-side shared use for like lift, things like that?
No, and, and, all that's in the right-of-way, we're only dealing with private property.
Okay.
So, remove, there used to be a requirement that you have to be able to cede the capital from ninety-three. And if you're gonna keep that regulation, you're not gonna get development in the OCP, because if you just put one story on top of Market Basket, you're blocking use of the capital. So the proposed code does not have that regulation to meet, to be able to cede the capital from I ninety-three.
That was a city requirement?
Yep, a lot of people thought that was a state requirement.
I knew that.
No, it's a city requirement.
Well, that really changes how I think about it.
Yeah, it's a city requirement.
Get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah. And I was surprised, a lot of people are, have been surprised when I said, no, that's a city.
I, I knew that one was a C, because I remember when, was it Smile Building coming? They had to do the view over thirteen.
Exactly. So, changes to the, the civic district. As you're seeing here, all this purple is proposed to be MXT, and this purple down here is proposed to be MXT. In the current code, that's all civic. And the main difference, the main reason for that, so we're not suggesting any changes in use. The civic is municipal, like legal doctor's office law use. So it also allows, I think it allows residential, but it, there's, the civic district also allows much taller buildings, very urban standards. There's nothing in there that protects all of these historic homes, because most of those areas are all where, areas we, so this here, so you know where we are, Pleasant Street, Main, Center, Green Street, not Center, Main, State, and Green Street, and South. So there's tons of beautiful historic homes there, but they are not protected with the civic district. So we made it the intent statement of the MXT, we kind of repurposed the MXT to preserve historic character. So now there's an intent statement of the MXT that says, preserve historic character and allow for the transition in the uses as needed. So it, it's a mixed-use district, it allows residential, it allows the other uses, but we now have design standards and reduced intensity standards in these neighborhoods that are designed to protect and disincentivize them to be torn down for higher-density development. MXU, the standards for that district were revised to encourage the type of urban development that we're, that we're looking at downtown. So north, down here, north and south of Main Street, it's kind of like where the Dunkin' Donuts is to the south, and to the north where the Cumberland Farms is. In those areas, you can see how the urban form has started to sort of deteriorate. You've got parking lots in front, buildings in the back. When people come in, they wanna tear down buildings and put the parking lots in front, and put the, move the new buildings to the back. So the standards of this district relate, so this is, this is one of the, that shows how those standards would be implemented. You're now required, if you wanna do an addition, or you wanna add to your property, you have to start at the property line. So you could do addition on the front of the property, you could do addition on the front and the side if you wanted to extend this building. But the only way you can do an addition on the side is strictly, is if it's less than two hundred square feet. So this is really designed to start bringing the buildings up to the street level and create that urban streetscape, the extension of Main Street into those areas. This is the rules for all districts, so I was talking about on those district pages, where the, with the two pages and the four columns on each page. Each of those columns corresponds to one of the sections of this district. These are basically like the recipe, the instructions for how to interpret these things, how to measure these things. So they're basically instructions for, for all of the standards in the districts. I'm not gonna go, go over them too much. Again, use table simplified, I'm just gonna call out a few things on the use standards. I think I mentioned to you in the past, the multifamily standards make it really, really challenging to do multifamily development in the city. They were standards that were sort of developed for like Loudoun Road and out, out in the suburban vehicular-oriented areas. So for instance, there's a twenty-five-foot perimeter buffer for, if you, if you have a two-family home and you say, I wanna add a third unit, you're kicked into these multifamily standards and the requirement to provide a twenty-five-foot buffer around your entire property. So that's not really appropriate for the, the downtown neighborhoods. So we basically eliminated those standards for the downtown districts, downtown urban districts. Chickens, there's a lot of talk about chickens in the past year, or two years, or whenever it was. The original buffer setbacks for the chickens, how that was, how they, how they came up with that was they looked at the smallest district we had, which was seventy feet, and they said, how much room do you need for chickens? Well, if you do research on chickens, you'll see it's ten feet, you know, ten by, you know, ten by something for, per chicken. So if you have ten feet this way, and you can provide however many you need, want this way, six, seven, eight, you know, another, but you, you need at least ten feet in, in width. And what do you have left? You've got sixty and sixty, or, or thirty and thirty. That's how they came up with the thirty-foot setback. They took the smallest compliant lot and took out the chickens, and that is what it was, thirty feet. So under the new code, the smallest compliant lot is now forty feet, right? So you take out your ten feet for the chickens, what are you left with? Fifteen and fifteen. So in the proposed code, it's fifteen feet setbacks, because that's the only way you're going to allow all the compliant lots to actually utilize, implement this use, which is a basic tenet of planning and zoning, that everyone who meets the criteria should be able to utilize the use. If you kind of said, okay, you're allowed a forty-foot lot, but you still need to provide thirty-foot setback, that's kind of known as a bit of a gotcha in the planning and zoning world, like you, you say you're giving somebody this, but you're really not. So in order to allow all the compliant lots, this is what the, this is what the setback would be. I just wanna point it out because it became such a political hot button at some point, and it's, and it is in there, and it is changed. We made home occupations much easier, and this is where I'm talking about manufactured housing parks. We, we changed the standards for manufactured housing parks from having like matchsticks in a row to them having to be horizontal, so they look more like ranch houses. We have a, a development or two like that in Concord, they're really nice. We also allowed for manufactured housing park owners to alter their lot standards to allow tiny homes. So currently, the lot has to be this or this, and it's not really appropriate for what we're calling a parklot model, which is the technical term for it. So now you can have smaller, reduced standards, so technically, the owner could, you know, potentially over time, transition his whole development into a tiny house development, or tiny house park. So development standards, the biggest thing to know about the development standards is that we, we threw in there triggers for when that you need to comply. So currently, basically, if you're gonna make certain changes, a change of use, for instance, you have to, the whole lot has to comply with the developments, with the developments here. So for parking, your whole lot would need to comply if you're doing a change of use. Under the proposed code, we put tiers in. So if you're providing, if you're gonna suggest, if you're gonna propose more than ten thousand square feet of impervious surface change, whether it's a building or a lot, that is going to trigger compliance with the whole lot. Consequently, it's also gonna trigger compliant, a site, a major site plan review. So if it's less than ten thousand square feet, you only have to provide the parking for that section of your, of your improvement. So you're not having to look at the whole entire site, you just look at this area, and you have to provide the parking and compliance with the code for that area that you're, that you're affecting. That consequently are, also corresponds with a minor site plan approval. So we lined up minor and major site plan with different levels of, of compliance needed in the code, which is really elegant if, if you're the city planner. This is probably my favorite thing about the change to the code. So it, it gives a lot more flexibility and clarity and removes, removes hopefully a lot of subjectivity, apparent subjectivity, and when you're making people comply with their whole site and, and when you're, when you're not. We also added all these little applicability charts, so you can tell if you're doing this, this is, this is what you have to do. Parking, I've talked about parking a lot, I don't wanna go over it, 'cause, well, it's late and retired. But the main thing about parking is we lowered the requirement from two to one-point-two-five for multifamily, one-point-five for duplexes, it stays two for single-family. We also put in a lot of flexibility there with conditional use permits to allow people to, to make parking more flexible and easier.
In all districts?
Yes, well, the, the residential districts. So with regard to some of the other districts, commercial districts, we, we lowered the requirements, like sort of in line with what the more common ITE standards are. So there, there wasn't quite a lot with regard to non-residential that we, that we affected. Development standards, just a few call-outs here. A lot, some things we took out of zoning and we put in site plan regulations, because then you don't have to get variances for them. So for instance, the width of a drive aisle was in the zone, is currently in the zoning. So if you wanna provide a twenty-two-foot drive aisle instead of twenty-four or whatever, you need a variance. So under the proposed, certain things are now under site plan regulations, so you can just go to the planning board and deal with them instead of going to ZBA. Again, lot of CUPs added to give flexibility with the design regulations. Simplified landscape screening types, currently it's like two or three pages of text, and they're all, I don't know, you can't even tell the differ, I can't tell the difference between half of them. There's like five different options, so we simplified that. Updated signs based on case law, and we required lighting, for some reason zoning, lighting is not required to be complied with, i- is only required for a parking lot, which in site plan, it's, it's, it's for parking and for building, you know, for the whole lot. But in, so we updated zoning to say, hey, the lighting needs to comply with your whole lot, regardless of whether it's for parking or for your building or whatever. Last, I think this is my last slide. Administration, this was just simplified, the organization of the sections were just simplified. And, and again, the triggers for plan review. If you look in our current code, you've got a whole page of requirements, probably like a dozen for minor site plan, and a whole page of requirements for major site plan. Again, a similar dozen, but with different standards. And so we, we basically just simplified all that down to this little table right here. Well, let me point to it. This little table right here. Basically, it says if you're greater than ten thousand square feet, whether it's a building addition, a new building, a parking lot, a parking lot addition, if it's greater than ten thousand feet of disturbance, it's a major site plan. If it's between two hundred, or two thousand and ten thousand, it's a minor site plan. If it's less than two thousand, it's a staff review, which is a higher number than it is currently. Currently, if you, if you have fifteen hundred or less, if you have sixteen hundred, you're going to minor site plan. So we raised that number to two thousand. Now, if it's zero to two thousand, that's just a staff review. There was also a requirement, and this to me is the biggest one that affects you all, is there's requirements if you're gonna do, go from two units to three or four, you automatically trigger minor site plan review, which you, you all may know and remember. Some people come in and they're not even proposing any site work at all, but they're triggering plan review with the sort of, you know, high requirements for the application submissions. So, and then if it was five or more, you were gonna, it was, a major site plan was required. Again, even if no site work is proposed. So the way it was written originally, if you had four units and you're adding just one unit, that would trigger a major site plan, which is a two-month process with pretty high standards for plan submission. So we took out all, we don't care how many units you're having. What we care about is what's gonna affect the site and what you're gonna do on the site. So now, if you're going from two units to five units and you need whatever, eight spaces, or however many you need, if you, if that, if you need to add eight spaces and that's this much parking, you, you're gonna be in site plan review for the parking lot, for the spaces that you need for the parking lot, not simply because you're adding units. So there's no trigger for the number of units on here. So that's kind of a big change as well, and hopefully will help a lot of folks avoid going through site plan who are not intending to do any improvements on their property. I tried to make it quick, did I go quick? Like thirty minutes?
Quick enough.
Yeah, so that's, that's it, and I, I, I hope a lot of that wasn't unfamiliar to you, those of you who've been here, you know, for the past few years. This is kind of the manifestation of all of the stuff that we've been talking about whenever, whenever we talk about the code. So far, I've had some positive feedback, constructive, positive feedback that we'll be making some of those changes that were suggested. You had a question?
Process for approval. This now goes, you're gonna continue to do these meetings, these public outreach?
Right.
And then it, it goes to the city council?
Correct. Well, it will go to the planning board first.
Right.
And then the city council. Well, you know, it will go to this group as a public hearing first, and then to the city council.
Where there'll be another public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the, what is the, what are the other little tangible things that if, assuming it does pass, or assuming it does get to the point where we're ready to do the, the, the next step? I mean, do we, does it change applications or the process or the, you know?
The site plan, the site plan regulations and the subdivision regulations need to be updated. I started it a long time ago, I just need to finish it. Because like I said, we took some things out of zoning, and they're gonna go on site plan regs. So I need to make sure all that stuff gets in the site plan regs.
So from a, from a, I'm just thinking from a process perspective and from a disruption perspective, so if you've gotta do a, a sign application and you've gotta commit into a sign application, you know, there's references on the sign app to different districts and, you know, if it's in this, it's this, if it's in that, it's that, does, are we gonna change all those as well?
Are you talking about like the codes, codes, physical, okay. That's a good point. I'm, I have, can't recall off the top of my set, head what those applications look like, but for the most part, you fill in the blanks. So there's nothing on there that would need to change.
Like nineteen eighty-six, you know, Microsoft Word.
Yeah. Well, and also, a lot of that with EnerGov is switching to digital.
Yeah.
So we may not even have those hard copy applications anymore, 'cause it'll all be digital.
I, I went through the process in Boston just recently, because we opened an office in Boston and went through the process, and it's all online, it's all, you know, you do everything with automatic forms. It spits out the final-
You even pay online.
You pay online, you do everything.
That's what we'll have, that's what we'll have, like-
Next month.
Next month.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
So when these change, is there gonna be, how do we deal with applications that are in process? Will it change anything, or will those stay under the old code because that's when they applied?
Yes.
Can they pull it back out?
If they want to.
And come back in under the new one if they think it's gonna benefit them?
Of course.
Or they could stay in.
Right, because it benefits them on the old one. No, I just, because that's gonna be a weird month or two for us.
Well, that's, that's, that's really why I'm really trying to like just push, get this-
Just get it done.
Get it, well, make sure we get all the input, and then I, that people are coming to me and saying, I have this issue with this, and I think this should change, like, I wanna, I wanna hear all that now so that I, so that we can, so the process is quick and painless to switch over, 'cause there are people asking me, like, literally, like, when, 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 you know, they want it done.
So you mentioned lighting, that there was a requirement in zoning and then of course planning. Why was that lighting not moved all to planning and be part of the planning board process?
Well, because if you're not triggering planning board review, then you wouldn't need to comply with it at all. So that's the, so we answered that, and the reason I am so quick with that answer is 'cause that's what we thought about parking spaces, like-
Right, why not, right, you're right.
You know, but you want everyone to be required to provide certain minimum standards of parking space.
Not just because you have to come here.
Right.
I get you, that makes sense.
Is it gonna address pole placement for electricity?
That's in the site plan regulations.
I'm kidding.
Don't be smart with me.
Okay, any other questions Heather? Good job Heather, thank you.
Thank you guys, thanks for listening, thanks for keeping your eyes open. I should've handed out toothpicks.
What's that? Yeah, I gotta close the public hearing? All right, next on our agenda is any other business which will legally come before the board. Anybody have anything they wanna bring up? I don't see anything in attachments, anybody? Staff, nobody?
Yep.
If not, we'll motion, we'll accept a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.